Good morning. I'd like to open up Tuesday, February 11th, 2025, Commissioners Court Meeting in the upstairs courtroom. It is officially 9:01, and I'd like to open us up by inviting Pastor Jeremy Cotton from Hill Country Fellowship to open us in prayer, please. Thank you. Let's pray. God, thank you for this time together today. I thank you for these men and women serving this county, and I pray, God, for your leading and guiding in all decisions they will make in this day, even for county judge and all the other things that will come before them. I pray that, Holy Spirit, you would lead them and guide them, give them wisdom, insight, and clarity in every decision that needs to be made today, that it would glorify you and bless the people of Burnett County. God, we thank you for that. Pray your blessing upon today in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you, Jeremy. Okay. Number three is public comment. I will say, anybody is welcome to make a public comment. You're limited to three minutes. But what I'd like to add is that before Agenda Item Number 23, I'm going to open public comment again in an effort to compartmentalize the meeting into our regular business and then move into the interview and appointment process. However, I'm not restricting anybody from doing whatever they want to during this public comment. I'm just letting you know that I'm going to reopen it again, just in an effort to do that. So with that said, is there anybody that has any public comments that they would like to give the court at this time? Okay. And again, I'll reopen that if anybody has something. I don't mind. Number four, discussion regarding notice for a Texas Association of County Training for Harassment Prevention. Shirley is in the house, our HR Director.
My name is Shirley Bullard, and I'm an employee of Burnett County. Just letting y'all know that we're taking steps to help prevent any future liability to the county. This current harassment prevention training is presented by TAC, and it will inform supervisors and employees of the protections under the law. What is and is not harassment. The course is designed to increase compliance awareness with the federal regulations and to provide practical information on preventing harassment in the workplace. It's important for supervisors to understand the laws when they're making employment decisions like hiring, firing, and discipline, so that we all have the information to protect ourselves and the county. We need the court to get behind this effort and ask all elected officials and department heads and employees to attend at least one of the scheduled sessions. And I'll add that law enforcement, TECO license, will receive educational credit for this training. We'll have sign-in sheets at each session to keep track of the attendees, and I'll be sending out an email with the schedules attached. They'll be March 3rd and 4th. Most of them on the 3rd are at the Ag Building and on the 4th at the South Annex, so that everybody's got a chance to attend and not have to go too far.
Thank you for that. Seven opportunities to attend, if I'm counting right, so we'll have that get noticed to all of our employees and department heads. Thank you for that. Okay, number five, discussion or action regarding the acceptance of the offer of donation from the Lake McCannan Conservation Corporation for the cost of installing a concrete slab, a bench, and an awning at the Burnett County Boat Ramp located in the Silver Park area. Commissioner Luther.
This is the Lake McCannan Conserva- Conservation Corporation has approached us, and they'd like to install a concrete slab, a bench, and an awning at the boat ramp. So I'm asking approval for them to do so.
Is that a motion?
It is.
Okay.
Second.
Any further discussions or questions on it?
I'm assuming they're working with you on location.
They do have a location. It is close to the, there's a little jetty that runs out, and it's at the front of that jetty.
Sounds like a great donation.
It is.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number six, discussion or action regarding the approval of bond for Frank Riley, Justice of the Peace Precinct Four. Is Judge Riley here? He said he was going to try, but he thought he had a hearing, but he wanted me to acknowledge that he wanted to be here.
Miss Santa Stafford, Burnett County Clerk, I have received the official oath and bond and rider from Judge Riley. And the rider is included because we changed his appointment date from the 8th through the 7th, and I just need court approval.
Okay.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And he's official officially. Super official. Number seven, discussion or action regarding the acceptance of the quarterly investment report from the Treasurer's Office for Q1 FY '25. And we have our quarterly report.
Do we have any representative from the?
Is Karen here? That's fine.
Here she's walking in right now.
Nobody turn around and stare at her.
Agenda item number seven.
That was impeccable.
Sorry, I apologize. I got stuck with some payroll stuff this morning.
No, I'm sorry that I did that to you. I didn't even look to see if you were first.
That's okay.
We just opened seven.
Okay. Is it okay if we can open eight first? So we can have December before the quarter.
You want us to come back to it? You need to.
I'm good.
Okay. Number eight, we'll open number eight, discussion or action regarding the approval of the monthly treasurer's report for December 2024.
Perfect, thank you. That would be just have December before we do the quarter review, so it is included. Okay. For December 2024, we had beginning cash investments balance of $58,538,120.34. We received $6,369,735.63. We had interest earnings of $232,336.46. We dispersed $4,507,781.66, leaving us with a month ending cash and investments balance of $60,602,392.35. We received donations for vet rides for $2,540 and employee appreciation banquet donations for $250.
Okay.
Move for acceptance.
Second.
Motion to accept and a second. Any more discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, back to seven. Discussion or action regarding the acceptance of the quarterly investment report from the Treasurer's Office for Q1 FY '25.
Okay. So for the quarter, we had interest earnings that totaled $726,000, excuse me, We maintained 19% of our fund balance in our depository bank, while 73% we dispersed into our pool accounts that we have, and then 8% into CDs and treasuries. Of that, we looked at an average of 4.37% interest rate for the quarter. And I think that's all I've got for you for the quarter.
All righty. Any questions, comments, or motions?
Move for acceptance.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, number 11.
Oh, yes, ma'am, absolutely.
While I'm up here.
While you're here. Number 11, discussion or action. Give me one second, I'm sorry. Discussion or action regarding the annual approval of the Burnett County Investment Policy 2025.
Okay, this is just housekeeping that we do annually. We review the county investment policy. We did not have any changes to the Public Funds Investment Act that affects our policy, so there's not been anything of that nature made. I have made one modification, and that is on Attachment B. And Attachment B just states that in Tori Kuhn, my chief deputy, also has authority to make investments under the direction of the investment officer, which is me, in compliance with the investment policy. So this just changed that Deanne was my previous chief deputy. She is no longer in my office, as she is the new tax assessor, and so this appoints Tori Kuhn to have the authority as well.
Okay. Same policy, one change for a new employee.
Yes, that's correct.
Any questions, comments, or motions?
Move for approval.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Sorry to keep you waiting. Think we got everything on page there. We did. Okay, number nine, discussion or action regarding scheduling a town hall and a Commissioners Court Workshop Meeting to receive public input on the potential purchase of new election equipment for Burnett County. That's for her. We are, is Doug here?
Yes.
Hey, Doug, how are you? One second. We are looking at having a town hall and gathering public input on the potential purchase of elections equipment. Doug, do you have anything you want to add to that, or? Doug said he would like to see as many people there as possible. And right now, AgriLife is reserved for the potential for that to be on Tuesday, February 25th, in the evening at AgriLife at 6 o'clock. We're going to have vendor there. We're going to try. We're also trying to have someone from the Secretary of State, and we're also going to try to have some folks from other counties that have done different things, so that way we can get questions. We'll, it'll be an open session workshop for us and the public to learn more about the process. So it really is that simple. Does anybody have any major objections or conflicts with the time? It's on our next court date, just in the evening.
That'll work. That'll work, mate.
Okay. All right, we'll post it. It'll be posted as a workshop, that way we can all attend. There will be no action taken at that meeting, but I'll go ahead and make a motion to schedule a town hall and a Commissioners Court Workshop Meeting to receive public input on the potential purchase of new election equipment for Burnett County. It will be located at the AgriLife Auditorium, 607 North Vandevere Street here in Burnett, and it will start at 6:00 PM. Second. Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I would like to add, we'll be advertising this on our website, social media, and we ask for your help in sharing that. Obviously, we want good input on that pretty big thing coming up. Okay. Number 10, discussion or action regarding the current uniform policy. The auditor brought this to my attention, that we have a uniform policy. We need to, we're not going to try to amend it and get in the weeds on it today, but she wanted to bring it to our attention to start the process, to talk to the departments that we've been helping out and see who needs uniforms, what their needs are, and try to hone it into some guidelines and maximum expenditures for the year on shirts, jackets, hoodies, things like that. In some cases, what brought this on is some specific brands that people request. The county would rather head in a direction of reimbursement as opposed to opening up all those accounts with all the vendors that you could get. So that's the goal of where we're headed.
Yes, sir. I'd like a better definition of uniforms, because we'd like to do more reimbursement.
Is your mic on?
Yes, we're seeking a clearer definition of uniforms from the Commissioners Court.
Okay. So the goal is not to take action today, but guys, if you'll review this, and again, talk to the departments you've been helping out and by the next court. Get with Karen on anything that you have, and we're going to try to get a better definition for, to make our auditor's office a little clearer and easier in that regard. Any questions? All good? Okay, number 12. The second hottest topic of the day. Discussion or action regarding the burn ban for the unincorporated areas of Burnett County. Is Derek here?
Yes, sir.
Hi.
I don't have a presentation for today, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Well, that's just because really hasn't been a whole lot of change since last week.
That's right.
So, of course, happy, we just got, we're currently getting a little bit of rain across the county, but as of about an hour ago, the best rainfall totals that we saw was about 1.23 inches there in very far northwestern portion of the county, next highest being out there towards Ocala with just under an inch. Most everybody else, though, has received less than a quarter inch. But yeah, no, as for the KBDI numbers, we're sitting at 492. Those numbers get updated here at about 40 minutes, so.
Have you gotten any feedback from local first responders, fire chiefs?
Haven't heard anything recently, so it seems like they're still happy. Like I say, it's kind of a status quo right now. We'd like to see a little more rain before we see, you know, really lifting this.
Okay. Any?
What does the forecast look like?
So we're looking at kind of scattered showers today with another kind of bigger shot of rain coming through this evening, tomorrow morning. But beyond that, it's going to be a roller coaster of temperatures over the next week.
And wind? What's the wind look like?
So we're going to see probably gusty conditions throughout most of the week, at least periods of gust anywhere between 16, 25 miles an hour, especially through this weekend after this dry cold front comes through on Saturday.
What are the thoughts on a temporary lift? Can we do that and put an end date on it?
That's what I was.
Well, we can, if we were going to lift it, we'd just lift it until we meet again. I'd only provide a 14-day window, but it's better than nothing.
What I would, so hopefully, coming out of today, we have a judge. Now, the judge will have the ability to lift that, so maybe we could do something if we're looking at, you know, a week before this next regular meeting, maybe we could lift it and then reassess at that next meeting, because the judge has the ability to lift it, it takes the court to put it on.
Well, the judge can put it on, it just has to be ratified in three days after that.
That would be the case. Okay, because I knew we could do it through like an emergency declaration, which is good for seven days. That would be the other way.
Okay.
I would be in favor of lifting the burn ban, and then if we got any conditions, which we could have a special meeting and then reinstated it if that needed to be, if other things didn't work out. But I would make a motion to lift the burn ban.
I'll second. Any further discussion? What time?
12:00.
Noon?
Noon. With me.
Okay. All those in favor of lifting the burn ban at noon today, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Keep praying for rain, everybody.
Doing more than praying at noon today.
We do need more rain, so, but we also understand the need for some burning, so. Okay. 13, discussion or action concerning the replat of lots WR2 and WR3, Wolf Creek Ranch subdivision to be known as lots WR2A, Wolf Creek Ranch subdivision, a combination of two lots into one. Commissioner Luther.
We've looked at it, and it's a combination of two lots into one, which we like that. I move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second, two into one. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. 14, discussion or action regarding the release of maintenance bond number S919-6604 for Sandia Ridge at the Legends. Commissioner Luther.
There's a bond for Sandia Ridge, and it's due to be released. So we've looked at the roads, and they're in good condition. So I move for a release of the bond.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Herb. Discussion or action regarding budget interdepartmental line item transfers.
We have one from Roden Bridge, number two, supplies to uniforms.
Supplies to uniforms. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 16, discussion or action for the authorization of payment of claims previously approved by the county auditor.
We have claims in the amount of $1,355,971.46. We have prepaid claims in the amount of $602,378.81.
Any questions, comments, or motions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion?
To pay the bills?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 17, discussion or action regarding FY '25 budget amendments.
We have $16,700 from nondepartmental to the IT department. It's for switches for the South Annex, and the contract for those switches will come up later in the agenda. We also have $1,500 from unallocated to conference for County Court of Law.
Okay. Two of those today. Any questions, comments, or motions?
And those switches, those are to fix that, an issue with the phone system.
We have a grant for the largest portion of replacing the switches to upgrade this is the South Annex portion, so it's all done in tandem. Any questions, comments, or motions?
Move for approval.
Second.
Any more questions? Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number 18, discussion or action regarding departmental asset transfers.
We do not have any asset transfers to present today.
Thank you. Discussion or action regarding department updates. We don't have any listed today. Number 20, acknowledgement of receipt. MIS summary, which is our trapper's report. B, Burnett County Emergency Services District Number Four Financial Statements for the year-end September 30th of 2023. C, Burnett County Emergency Services District Number Two Financial Statements for the year ended September 30th, 2024. D, Bertram Volunteer Fire Department Financial Statements for September 30th, 2023 and 2022. E, January 2025 Septic and Building Report. F, Notice of Encore Electric Delivery Company LLC's and LCRA Transmission Services Corporation Proposed Bell County East Switch, which is Encore, to Big Hill Substation, LCRA STSC 765 KV Transmission Line. And those are all attached. And you can read those. 21, discussion or action regarding contracts, agreements, or grants to be approved and or ratified. A, renewal of marketing advertising services with the Texas Hotel and Lodging Association. Let me back up. Does anybody want to pull any of these out separately to discuss? Okay. B, Axon and Motorola demo agreements. C, approval of the Sequel Data Systems quote under TIPS Contract Number 210101 in an amount not to exceed $16,696.83 to install new switches at the South Annex. D, approval of the sponsorship for the Confederate Air Force Blue Bonnet Airship. I think that's commemorative Air Force, but it's fine. Karen, on the B, Axon and Motorola demos, did we get that all? Are we good there?
Axon was able to give us a list of the equipment and the pricing, and that's $13,086.30. We do not have a pricing on the Motorola demo. Now, we would only owe Axon and Motorola if we did not return the equipment.
Okay.
What is the trial period?
I'd have to look up.
Hold on, Blair, I'm gonna.
Here it is.
90 days.
90 days. 90 days. Okay.
Is that one, for one unit, we demo one unit each?
Those are four body cameras from Axon and from WatchGuard and in-car video system from Axon, and then we already have Motorola in-car video system.
Sorry. Say your name and start over.
Josh Sling.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, so it's Axon and Motorola, two companies that do body cameras. We're looking at their newest, latest, and greatest ones. So with Axon and Motorola, they're both four body worn camera systems. An in-car for Axon, but we already have Motorola, so they're going to turn on some features. So there's nothing to return on the Motorola side, other than the body cameras. Axon, they'll actually install it in our car, and they'll schedule the date to uninstall it and take it back. So that's just a, the trial agreement is to make sure we return it, so we don't end up with extra equipment, so.
All right. Will you raise your right hand and swear to return the equipment?
I will. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay. And Blair, state your name and.
Yes, Blair Manning, Tourism and Marketing Director. The CAF Blue Bonnet Air Show, that sponsorship, the event date is March 15th. The sponsorship level that I am suggesting is for the Colonel at $2,500. That would get us eight VIP tickets, four VIP parking passes, four social media posts, a thank you ad, and eight airshow shirts, as well as PA announcements during the show. The usage of the tickets, I will take two, as per my job description, to make sure that all things are done that they say will be done, and then we will be doing a giveaway via our social media. It falls under hot funds, allowing us to utilize this. Under B, advertising solicitations and promotions that directly promote tourism in the hotel and convention industry. And C, promotions of the arts that directly promote tourism and the hotel and convention industry as well.
Any questions on anything 21A, B, C? Any questions on anything twenty-one, A, B, C, or D? Questions, comments, or motions?
Move for approval of Agenda Item Twenty-One in its entirety.
Second. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Twenty-two, discussion or action concerning calling for bids and bid openings, request for proposals, qualifications, and related openings. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Megan Schuman, Burnet County Auditor's Office. Just wanted to say that we do have two bids posted to our county website. It is for the cold mix and black base. Those will be due March the fifth at two and two-thirty, so those are the only ones we have at this time.
Thank you.
What's the date on those?
March the fifth. At two and two-thirty.
Thank you. So just an update, no action. Okay. Pretty efficient on that first part of the meeting. I am gonna do a five-minute break, real quick. We're gonna readjust this side of the courtroom a little bit to set it up a little bit differently. So bear with us, we'll be back in roughly five minutes. Go ahead, stop.
I'm open here. I'm listening from over there.
Is the meter going on the screen? Thank you. What? Oh, yeah. Thank you. Okay. We're going to come back into session at 9:41. And... We are on Agenda Item 23. Discussion and Action Regarding Conducting Interviews of All Applicants Seeking the Appointment for the Vacant Position of Burnet County Judge. Said interview shall strictly be conducted by the members of the Burnet County Commissioners' Court. A) The Burnet County Commissioners' Court may go into executive session as authorized under 551.071 of the Texas Government Code Attorney Consultation in order to consult with legal counsel regarding law on the selection of an official by Commissioners' Court. B) The Burnet County Commissioners' Court may go into executive session as authorized under 551.074 of the Texas Government Code Personnel Matters to deliberate the appointment of a Burnet County judge. Now that I've read all that, I'm going to back up, and I'm going to reopen. Item number three, public comment. Sorry. You'll have three minutes for public comment.
Good morning. My name is Neil Kennedy. I'm an attorney in Marble Falls. My wife and I have been property owners in Burnet County for over 30 years now, and we've been full-time residents and small business owners in Marble Falls for over 25 years. I'm here this morning to speak in favor of the appointment of Judge Gil Jones as the interim county judge. First moved my law practice to Marble Falls in 1998, and I had the privilege of practicing before Judge Jones on the bench for the next 14 years until he retired from the bench in 2012. During that time, I didn't always agree with his decision, particularly when he ruled against one of my clients. But I always felt, however he ruled, that his rulings were all very well reasoned, supported entirely by the facts of the law of the case, and fair as could be. Only one occasion did I attempt to deal one of his decisions, the Court of Appeals, and they agreed with Judge Jones. After he retired from the bench, he's mediated several of my cases in a wide variety of issues, and so far has a 100% success rate in settling those cases. I've also gotten to know Judge Jones personally since he retired from the bench through our membership in the Daybreak Morning Rotary Club, which he helped found and recruited me for, and for which he's been a tireless volunteer. Judge Jones is eminently qualified to serve as the interim county judge in addition to his extensive legal experience, both as an attorney and on the bench, and his experience as a longtime resident, far longer than I am, in Burnet County. He was also a certified public accountant before becoming an attorney. He is very knowledgeable about county governments and all the financial issues, and so can step in immediately, in day one, and take over the role. Plus, I'm absolutely convinced that he has no political aspirations at a stage in our life when most of us are thinking about retirement. His primary focus has been, and always will be, serving the community. So I think we're very fortunate to have him. And I also know that he has no intention of running for the seat when it comes open at the end of, in 2026. So the other candidates, who both appear very qualified, will have the opportunity to run for a vacant seat, and the voters will have the opportunity to pick the next county judge without this court having to appoint someone who will end up serving for years. So for all those reasons and many others, I strongly recommend the appointment of Judge Jones as the next interim county judge. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning. Russell Tudor, citizen, taxpayer of Burnet County, well over 50 years, half a century, wow. The other night, on the 6th, listened to every question, every answer, from all applicants. We have a thought. Probably one of the most important things that was debated and discussed on the 6th was a five, 10, 15-year plan. I believe the most dedicated person to implement and carry out a long-range plan is someone that has a long-range thoughts of being in that seat right there, and that would be Chief Deputy Alan Trevino. I thought I had on the way home that evening after that meeting was talking, I was thinking about some situations, a few, over the last several years as a firefighter. Who do we want in that driver's seat during an emergency, a disaster? Not only has Chief Deputy Trevino been under fire, but he has laid down his life to protect others. He's an administrator. We need an administrator more than we need a judge, and he has certainly worked with many, many people under his command, and done a very good job in many places. I've known him a little over a year now, and in that year, I've asked him some tough questions, have I not? I felt like he'd be a good judge for us for a good time now, and even after the 6th, after getting to know our other candidates, unwavering, my personal choice is not wavered, hasn't changed. I'm asking this court to give him a unanimous election today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Claire Nybrow, and I am a Burnet County voter, taxpayer, and interested person. Burnet County needs committed, effective, transparent, and steady leadership now more than ever. We need a forward-thinking leader committed to skillful management over the long haul. I recommend that Chief Deputy Alan Trevino be appointed county judge. Chief Trevino is aware of the county's challenges and is ready to lead immediately to ensure no lag time, as he is already up to speed. His readiness to make an immediate impact is a testament to his preparedness for the role. Chief Trevino is well acquainted with and deeply understands the budget process. He has managed the Sheriff's Office budget for the last two years, which accounts for almost half of the county's annual budget. He has an affinity for numbers and all things budget, and a keen eye for detail. Again, he is poised to hit the ground running, ensuring our financial management will be in good hands. Chief Trevino already has professional relationships with elected officials, department heads, and county employees. He is well-respected and has a sterling reputation. He also has excellent people skills and a collegial and genuine disposition. Chief Trevino's strategic vision extends beyond immediate challenges. He recognizes the need for both short-term and long-term plans to manage growth and infrastructure challenges in Burnet County. His intention to seek input and collaboration from neighboring counties demonstrates his commitment to building teams and coalitions for our future. Chief Trevino's law enforcement and emergency management skills will be invaluable as the county judge. He already has an excellent professional relationship with Sheriff Boyd. Knowing that these two highly competent men will work shoulder to shoulder to protect Burnet County's citizens is very reassuring if there is ever a real emergency in Burnet County. Chief Trevino's decision to run for the county judge seat in 2026 is a huge positive. This declaration demonstrates his commitment to the citizens of Burnet County and his long-term vision for the role. He recognizes our essential need for stable and calm leadership and is qualified and prepared to deliver exactly that on day one. Burnet County needs Chief Trevino's unique combination of experience, leadership skills, and commitment. His appointment as county judge is necessary for the county's progress and prosperity. Chief Deputy Alan Trevino is indeed the right man for the job. Thank you very much.
Charlie Parker. Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to come up here and speak on this matter, and thank you for the forum that was conducted the other day. I was really impressed by the number of people it turned out. Burnet County has been given a unique opportunity to move in a different direction, a direction aside from the last 10 years that we've seen here. We also have the, a blessing to have three good candidates that signed up for the job. I will say, though, that there's only one man, and that man is Alan Trevino. With the unique skills, and following up on Mrs. Nybrow, I don't know how I can do much better of a recommendation, but his management skills, his budgeting skills, his familiarity with this court, he's been pretty much at every courtroom that I've been to in the last two years. One other thing that I would add is that I've been told that he's been the only candidate that's actually attended the Texas District Groundwater Conservation Board meetings to seek advice, which we know we've had a bunch of, we have a bunch of water issues. So in closing, like I said, Alan Trevino is the only choice that I can see, and I would strongly recommend that the county commissioners nominate Alan Trevino for this post. Thank you.
My name's Patty Coop. I'm a Burnet County interested person. I do have some, first, a quick comment about the, this unfair advantage narrative that's It's not statutory, and I'm not sure why it would even be considered as part of the nomination process. Somebody who's willing to commit to serving and running rather than somebody who's willing to serve for a temporary amount of time, they're vastly different personalities. I'm going to read this on behalf of my dad, who's a Korean veteran and is unable to be here today. He says, "I am writing to support Alan Trevino for Burnet County judge. His skills, experience, and community dedication are a good fit for the citizens of Burnet County and are exactly what we need. Trevino's campaign focuses on transparency, integrity, and growth, proposing to use surplus funds for infrastructure and debt reduction, showcasing his fiscal responsibility. Chief Deputy Trevino possesses the necessary qualities for an effective county judge, with expertise in budget management, government administration, emergency response, and excellent interpersonal relationships with county employees. His ideas are clear and actionable, and I believe he will be an excellent facilitator. Chief Deputy Trevino's deep community engagement, leadership, and service commitment make him an outstanding candidate. His participation in local activities shows his accessibility and commitment to his constituents. He will also be a 40-plus hour-per-week county judge. This is a very important issue to many residents of this county, and it's not having uncontested probate and maybe uncontested guardianships, which take two days a month, be a larger factor than budget and administration. I think that the budget and administration deserves heavier weight. There's 28 other days in the month where you're not going to be doing uncontested probates. So one has a higher weight than the other." Excuse me. Choosing Chief Trevino signifies the court's dedication to proactive governance. His planning skills and local insight will further facilitate a bright future for Burnet County. And then, after careful consideration of the applicant's forum responses, we strongly endorse Chief Trevino. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Donna Wilcox, Burnet County citizen, taxpayer. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I stand before you today as a citizen of Burnet County, deeply invested in our community's future. The appointment of our county judge is not a political decision. It's an administrative duty to select the most qualified individual to lead with integrity, stability, and impartiality during this critical transition period. That's why I strongly urge you to appoint Judge Gil Jones. Judge Jones brings over 16 years of judicial experience as a district judge alongside decades of law, governments, and community leadership service. His extensive background in managing complex cases, overseeing very large, complex budgets, and resolving conflicts demonstrates his capability to make thoughtful, fair decisions under pressure. Importantly, Judge Jones does not intend to run for the position in 2026, ensuring his focus remains on what matters most, serving the best interest of Burnet County without political influence. In a time of governmental turmoil and division, we need a leader who can restore trust, foster collaboration, and bring calm, steady leadership to the Commissioners' Court. Judge Jones's impartiality, proven conflict resolution skills, and deep commitment to public service make him uniquely qualified to provide that stability. Judge Jones was vetted by the citizens of five countings. Having been elected to four terms as district judge, we know him well. We know him very well, and there's more to know about the others. Your decision today isn't about politics. It's about appointing the person with the exemplary merit, experience, and qualifications to guide Burnet County forward. I respectfully ask you to make the choice that prioritizes leadership, fairness, and the well-being of our county. Appoint Judge Gil Jones as our county judge. Thank you.
Good morning, gentlemen. My name is Robin Thompson, longtime citizen, taxpayer, and, I guess, busybody, for lack of a better word. Not busybody, but active in the community. I am here this morning to ask you to appoint Gil Jones. I think that to do otherwise is dictating the future of Burnet County. There would be an unfair advantage regardless of everybody's thoughts and opinions. The incumbent is always has a distinct advantage. Gil has proven, and we don't need to go through all of his laundry list, everybody knows Gil. I don't have anything against either of the other candidates. They probably all have their strengths, but I think that it's in the interest of giving the citizens a choice in two years for the Commissioners to appoint Gil Jones at this time. I would like to turn on the Channel 36 news and see Burnet County in a favorable report going forward. That has not been the case in the past couple of years, and I think that's something that all of us have in the back of our mind. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Addis Mello, and I too am a longtime Burnet County taxpayer. I'm here in support of Gil Jones because I've known him since right after 1982, when we moved up here. I've known him professionally and personally, and we have an opportunity to get the benefit of his years of experience during this 21-month interval until the election. Thank you.
Carol Klingerman, Burnet County resident, taxpayer. I always talk about the different aspects of the three candidates, but on the national level, we've got a problem in the country. It's called bureaucrats. And I think he's talking about the Channel 36, go turn it on Saturday noon. We've got a whole new fresh group of fresh people in Washington. We're getting rid of the bureaucrats. Hey, I'm sorry. It's new times. We need somebody fresh in there, someone that's got new ideas, not old ideas. All they do is just end up with problems. So I'm supporting Alan Trevino, and that's all I've got to say.
Good morning. Mike Runyon, Burnet County resident. I'm supporting Chief Deputy Trevino. He's not only a top-notch law enforcement officer, but a businessman. He's good with the budget, and during his time with the DPS, he was on the governor's protection detail, and they didn't just have to deal with problems at hand, they had to perceive problems. And I think being able to perceive some of the things coming up in the county, that would be a very good asset. So, and everybody else has covered pretty much everything else, so, thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Christian Fletcher. Live and work in Marble Falls. I've known Judge Jones for, gosh, 35 years plus. You all should have received an email from me speaking in favor of Judge Jones. Some things have happened since that email went out. One would be the forum, and I think that Judge Jones's performance exceeded the performance of the others. You look at his credentials, and I don't think there's really any comparison when you look at, on paper, the differences between the candidates. And then, you know, time in the county and service of the county. I mean, he's been here for 40-plus years compared to 14 or six. I would add to that, though, that, you know, the challenges between the Sheriff's Department and other divisions in the county from a budget perspective, right, wrong, or indifferent, are well-documented, well-known. I would ask you guys if it makes sense to have a current employee of the Sheriff's Department acting in a completely unbiased capacity and leading the county through some challenging times over the next couple of years. We need the county to be put in the best position possible for 2026 and going forward, and I think that Judge Jones is that person. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Beverly Graham. I'm a concerned citizen, and my words today are from me and my husband. My husband was not able to attend today. We are Burnet County residents for 30 years, and we're taxpayers. I really have a few moments to say, I, you know, I've reviewed all of the interviews, I mean, excuse me, the applications. I have attended the forum, and I think we need to step back and think. This is a very important decision, and this person is going to lead this county for 22 months, which is a significant portion of time. I do agree with the statement that was made earlier that we really need change. We are confronted with change coming to us with the growth. This is not a minor decision, and we have four people that are very qualified to step forward and do that. I have put the meaning of the words so I can be crisp. As Commissioners, it is imperative you appoint the most qualified candidate to the Burnet County judge position. Alan Trevino is by far the most qualified candidate. He has the following strengths. Proven ethics. Demonstrated integrity. Demonstrated open-door policy. In-depth knowledge of Burnet County Commissioners' Court. In-depth knowledge of Burnet County budget. Strong experience leading large Burnet County teams. Strong immediate plan of action with his 30-day and 60-day plan. Specific plan for the future of Burnet County through strategic, long-range plans. Strong commitment to the Commissioners' Court to conduct it with transparency. Alan is a known commodity. Alan is well thought of in the community, and Alan is ready to go right now. Again, Alan Trevino is most qualified to fill the position of Burnet County judge. There've been many comments about an unfair advantage. No one knows what tomorrow is going to bring. No one has that crystal ball. I implore you to make a decision based on today and the next 22 months. Thank you.
Is there any more public comment? Okay. Here are none. I'm going to go back to the agenda item. Read it again. 23. Discussion and Action Regarding Conducting Interviews of All Applicants Seeking the Appointment for the Vacant Position of Burnet County Judge. Said interview shall strictly be conducted by the members of the Burnet County Commissioners' Court. Where did my counsel go? Where did my counsel go? A and B could be read if you decide to go to them, or do I need to read them out? Okay, all right. Over there? No? Okay. Bear this for a moment while we hone in this process publicly in front of you guys, because we haven't done that. So, I just got a request from Commissioner Luther. No cell phones or electronic devices by the applicant while in the interview. Some other counties have done this in the past, and it is my recommendation, based on other counties, that the two applicants that aren't being interviewed, please not be in the room. We can't make that mandatory. It's a public meeting, and I am not going to keep any of you from being in here, but that is recommended, that you step outside until it's your time to interview. The other thing is, this is between the Commissioners' Court and the applicants, and so, I'm going to have to work on that. Any outbursts in the, from you guys, just so you know, if we have to, we'll go into executive session. We don't want to, but we will. If we can't maintain decorum, or we'll just end the item and come back to the next court in two weeks and do it again. Nobody wants to do that. So I'm begging you to just please keep your comments to yourself during this process. Everybody has had ample opportunities to speak, between emails today and all that. So I hope that you agree with me and that everybody can remain civil in this courtroom and respect this room. So, there's the order in which they're going to go. We talked about alphabetical, or in the order they applied, and that happens to match. So, we're going to go with that. That'll be the order in which they interview. So, that'll be Gil Jones first, Allen Trevino second, Brian Wilson third. At any time, any commissioner wants to go into executive session, we can talk to our counsel for legal advice if we need, if we decide we want to do that. Is there any questions on that? We have not agreed upon any questions. We didn't have a meeting to do that, so that didn't happen. I know that I have some questions for, and all of my questions that I ask will be asked to all three applicants. Do you guys have questions as well? You do? Two, okay. What we'll do is we'll go in the same order. Each applicant will try to be as consistent as possible on exactly the same order. Please feel free to correct me if I missstep. It'll be unintentional. Any questions before we start? Okay. After all that said, I would like to welcome applicant Judge Gil Jones to come up here.